Good evening. I have called to order the November 25, 2013, meeting of the Goffstown Board of Selectmen. Will you please join me in the pledge? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as eternal. Our first order of business tonight is the acceptance and correction of the minutes of the November 18, 2013, public and non-public minutes.
Move to accept with corrections.
Motion, and then second with corrections.
That was the 18th, right?
Correct.
Okay. The large paragraph in the middle, the last full-line sentence, the planning were granted the four. It should be three of.
Three of the four.
Right, that were requested by the applicant. And on page 18, workshop training discussion was discussed, the word "held" should be discussed, right above all business.
Third full paragraph, first sentence.
Yes, the first sentence of the three-line paragraph, right above all business.
So they're gonna be holding them in the future, but they want some ideas?
Yeah. Right, the training discussion, a workshop training discussion was discussed to be at Southern O'Hamshen. It wasn't held.
Okay.
I just have one minor grammatical on page seven. Third paragraph down, last line, Director Queram said he will move the line and keep an eye on it from any issue versus "and."
Any others? Motion to accept with corrections. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Does that include non-public as well?
The motion was included both. Were there any changes on non-public?
That was my understanding for both. Is that your second? Okay, so the vote stands. Let's go down to the $500 donation. That's at tab four. Sue, can you just explain?
Yes, the RSA 3195B requires any amount under $5,000 to be placed on a selectmen's agenda to be publicly accepted. And Mr. Potvin has approached our GTV coordinator, Mr. McKeon, and he would like to donate $500 to his purchase of broadcast headsets. Mr. Potvin's been involved with GTV as a play-by-play crew for the season's varsity football games. And he and Jeff Hubbard made do with our available equipment and decided he wanted to help out with the production for next season. The money would purchase two headsets with boom microphones.
Okay, so the money would be used for that specific purpose.
Exactly.
So the purchase would be not to exceed $500.
Correct.
All right, do you have any questions?
Unless they have money in their equipment line to.
Right. Well, offset it.
Offset, yeah.
Up to them.
You wouldn't want to put a restriction on a motion of accepting.
Just a motion to accept $500 to be used towards headsets.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion?
With a letter of thanks.
Letter of thanks.
Yep, good suggestion. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0. Sue, why don't we start with the town administrator's report? We'll take a break if anybody shows up at 6:10 for public comment.
No announcements, Nick.
Oh, I'm sorry, put him here.
There weren't in the packet.
I do not have any. Does any, do any of the board members have announcements to share this evening?
Happy Thanksgiving to all.
Yes, absolutely.
Town administrator's report. The Selectmen weekly meeting schedule is Wednesday morning. You have a meeting with Hillsborough County Commissioners at the Bouchard Building in the Commissioners' Conference Room.
Do we know how many are available for that meeting? You are.
I am, I'll be there.
You definitely?
I'm, well, I'm planning unless you.
I won't know until I hear what the concrete truck says tomorrow, so then I will be.
You'll be in?
Mm-hmm.
So how many do we have? How long do you anticipate that meeting's gonna run? Do you know?
I think less than an hour.
If I can get away, I'll slide down.
Okay, then I'll be there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm planning.
They put us on the agenda from 9 to 10.
Okay.
And I have the U. This is the design charrette that the county did a while back, and I thought maybe you'd want to review that before your Wednesday morning meeting with them.
Send that one back.
Extra one? Consensus folder tonight includes employee status reports, call firefighter and paramedic new hires, event permits, Lions Club Christmas tree sales from November 29 to December 24, Goffstown Main Street programs Friday night under the lights is December 6, 5 to 8. There's also revocable temporary licenses for private drain connections at map 21 lot 86 and map 17 lot 4. Motion needed.
Motion to approve the consensus.
Second. Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Thank you. And the assessor recommends intent of timber cut map 2 lot 19, veterans' tax credits for map 6 lot 17B-148, map 8 lot 17, map 17 lot 88, map 34 lot 137, map 37 lot 13, map 38 lot 117-1. Also veterans' tax credit and tax credit for service-connected total disability, which is map 3 lot 65A-5, and a blind exemption for map 5 lot 38-35.
Motion to accept the assessor's recommendations.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the recommendation? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries 5-0-0. Sue, if we can pause just for a moment. There's now 6:10, which is our appointed time for public comment. Don't see anyone in the room comment for this time, so we'll move on. I will caution folks, if they're intending to show up for the 7:30 public comment, we may not get there this evening. It's a fairly short agenda, so just be aware of that. If you're at home and you want to run down, now's the time. Thank you, Sue.
I did speak to the assessor about the board's request to have him present the equalization study, and he will be in on December 2 to do that for you. Out-of-state travel request. Request for authorization for Brian Ray to attend a free one-day seminar, virtualization technology users group in Foxborough, Mass. in January. Travel and lodging costs are estimated at $229 and are included in the 2014 budget.
Yes, Nick.
I'll make a motion to approve the travel reimbursement. I'm not, it's only in Foxborough, only an hour and a half away.
Yeah.
So I'm not inclined to authorize an overnight stay for that.
I've traveled to many conferences down in Plymouth, which is even farther, and I drive back the same day.
Okay, so that, the cost will be less than the $229?
Yep. It's $100 for the travel.
For the travel.
Can I ask a question, Doctor? What was the rationale? I mean, does this thing start at 7 o'clock in the morning or something?
Starts, I believe, at 8.
Okay, a little early. I'll second Nick's motion.
Absolutely. Is that a motion?
Yes, he did.
I didn't inform the motion, okay.
Yes.
In a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Everybody understand the motion? Any discussion?
It's to approve without the overnight stay.
Correct.
Correct.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries 5-0-0.
Process to extend Factory Street. RSA 231 colon 8 is a reference from the town attorney regarding the process to extend Factory Street to the Butters' property line. The person requesting the extension would submit a petition, and I have made Alan Eaton aware of that.
So he's responsible for submitting the petition, including all the backup paperwork that goes with it, including meets and bounds.
And we will be responsible for holding whatever required public hearings.
Right.
And I just have one comment on that. Also with that, if that does come into us, could it be clear that which, that we're doing it?
I don't understand.
Well, the layout, because it talks about a competition, may lay out any new class, okay, or alter. Are we doing a new or an alter? And the reason why I'm asking the question, because the other, second part of my question is, if the documentation ever appears, or is ever found, there is documentation that's found after we do this, does it have any effect or is it negated?
It's negated. It's really cleaning it up without doing the.
Well, I just.
And it wouldn't be class four, because that's a state highway, so this would be the second class five or six highway.
No, 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 no. What I meant is, it says, "May lay out any new class or alter." Are we being asked to alter or lay out? That's, so that it's clear to us which one we're working with.
My understanding, we're gonna have a new layout.
New layout.
I just want to make sure that it's clear, that.
Of a class five road.
That's what it says here, pretty much.
I understand the distinction Selectmen Devanz is making. Is it a new layout or is it the alter?
Right.
We'll see what Alan presents.
Yeah, thank you.
Amendment to personnel plan, that discussion's ongoing, so we won't do that till later. That's it.
Moving right along.
Actually, did we conclude on that with 3.5% on the?
I think we did.
You probably could vote on that.
I can couple with 3.5.
All you have to do is for next year. The personnel plan is only one year at a time.
Make a motion, I'm saying a motion.
Well, I have a, is this the motion, what we're dealing with, is to make amendment to the personnel plan?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any other amendments that we need to make, or couldn't they be done separately?
Yeah.
Yeah, they could be done separately.
Actually, I had, I have an amendment form, but I can't get into this computer at break. I'll go upstairs and I'll have the amendment form for you.
But this is the only one that's time-sensitive for January 1st.
Right.
Okay.
So I will go make those changes on the amendment form when we break for non-public. I'll run upstairs and do that for you later.
We'll take a motion on it that time.
And then when you come out of non-public, you can.
Right, okay, thank you.
A little hold off on that?
Yes. Because it's adding the new plans as well as the percentage in the personnel.
Senator, Selectmen's discussion, committee reports. Do we have a report from the library?
We do. We all covered something last week, didn't we? There was a retreat, talked about the retreat, has been postponed.
It's the ambulance.
There we go. Trustee coffee chats, wanted a report from the members and assigned to, trying to implement that. Personnel plan is discussed, and legal counsel, they voted to, the board voted to hire attorney Andrea Chatfield, I think I got that right, Cook, Little. And the next meeting will be December 18 at 6 o'clock, and it was pretty short and sweet.
Yes, I have a couple of questions on the personnel plan and legal counsel. What I have here, it says they discussed the draft personnel manual, and also that they hired an attorney.
Well, no, they didn't hire, they voted to Select one, they didn't hire anybody yet.
Well, it says, "The board voted to hire attorney Andrea Chatfield from Cook, Little, Rosenblatt Mansion."
Yes.
Okay, but my question is, is to review the draft personnel manual. So we have, I guess the question that I have is, we have the library, which comes under the trustees of the trust funds, I'm sorry, library trustees, and they're looking to have their own personnel manual or personnel plan reviewed by a separate attorney. How does that affect the current personnel plan that we have? And I guess where the follow-up questions that I have on that, I understand that employees of the library are technically considered employees of the trustees of the library. Yet, the personnel policy affects or has things in it that they're currently following.
I'd like to know how their personnel plan differs from ours, since we have to administer part of it. I mean, we do their payroll and everything. How is it different from ours?
Retirement, health insurance, they are under.
They purchase through us.
Right, that's where I just have a concern, that they're employees of the trustees, yet their participation and the thing that we're going to be making an amendment to, which is insurances, affects them. Yet, they're gonna have their own personnel policy. So the personnel policy, now that we amend, if they have a separate one, where do they fall? How does it affect all the other contracts that we have that refer to personnel plan? And I guess the concern I have is that we have a different attorney that's gonna review that policy, which is different.
That has no knowledge of our policy.
Exactly, that's.
If I could, following along with that, is there, can someone review the state statutes to see where that line is? I understand that the trustees have hiring, firing, all of that authority, but as employees of the town, do they fall under the town employees' personnel plan?
In the past, the library trustees have used the town's personnel plan. However, I'm not sure there's a requirement to do that.
So they.
They have just elected in the past to follow the town's.
I would say that would be up to their legal counsel and it is their review of the personnel plan to make sure that it jives and lines up with the town's policy. I mean, that should be their responsibility. We've got our policy.
Have they, were you there during the discussions of the changes in this policy compared to the town policy? No?
Well, I guess the concern I have is, if they are employees of the trustees, and we vote, or we make it, what town employees that we control, what they get for insurance, what their contributions are insurance, now are employees under that work across the street at the library, under the trustees?
Will they be treated differently?
Yeah. I mean, who, how is the retirement calculated? Do they have a separate, is retirement addressed underneath their personnel plan? I'm just.
Go ahead.
I would assume, since the town is purchasing the insurance and setting the rates, the library and its employees, and I may be wrong, but this is just the way I would envision it, if library employees wanted to take advantage of the town insurance, it would be at the.
What we're offering.
What we're offering and the rates. I guess, could the library go off on their own and get insurance for their employees?
They could, I guess.
Yeah, they could. But that raises an additional question then. If they are employees of the trustees, not employees of the town of Goffstown, how do they participate in the insurance plan offered by the town of Goffstown?
That's a very valid question.
Well, but right now, they're governed by our personnel plan, the personnel plan that we have, the town has.
That's what they elected to follow.
So that's where they are right now.
Yes.
Now they've hired an attorney to look at their own separate personnel plan. And again, my comment would be, that's incumbent upon that attorney to look into the town plan and make sure what, that they drive relative to all aspects of it, including insurance and anything else that needs to be considered.
Let me talk to Diane and find out if there were any changes to the monetary part of the personnel plan. How is their personnel? I think that's the underlying thing, how is it different from ours?
Right.
Because we're the ones that are charged with offering the insurance.
Right, and if it is different, we need to be concerned with any aspect of it. And that's up to them. They're paying the legal bill. This is the way they want to go, that's their responsibility.
They have a line to work with.
If I could, just to follow up, I want to go back to, I think where Selectmen Devanz was going. If the library trustees are establishing their own personnel plan, they're in fact saying they are employees of us, not employees of the town.
They always said that.
Okay, so where is that line as far as, are they eligible to get the benefits from the town? They're not town employees. How do they take advantage of our insurance?
Our health insurance carrier, we're no different from any other town in the state of New Hampshire, provides it for all the entities in the town. So the library is part of our operating budget, because we raise funds for the library per the statute, and they're part of our budget, so they come under the same health insurance policies that we offer other employees. Now, what the, their employer, which we, the library trustees, decide to pay for that, that would be their decision, I would imagine.
Workers' comp?
Workers' comp is a set rate by the insurance carrier, and they would.
And who is the employer?
They are the employer, but they come under the town budget, because the town has to raise funds for the library. That's how the law is set up.
But I guess where it gives more confusion is employees look at the personnel plan as to, for example, a death in the family. What do they get? So are we, are we going to have employees that work for the library completely different?
I have no idea what the differences are. We have to compare both documents to see what.
But it's not only that, it's, you know, it's how overtime is calculated, it's holidays, everything that's done. Everybody here is treated under this personnel plan. If there's a separate document, is finance gonna go crazy because this group of people is treated differently on how these holidays, these overtime, and how these things are all calculated? And I guess.
If there are any changes in monetary benefits in their personnel plan, then there's a budget impact. And that's where the board of Selectmen come in, because you send forward the budget.
But since we don't know any of the details, and we've got a lot of questions, I think it would be appropriate to write a letter to the trustees.
See if we can see the draft.
Saying we have concerns and questions, and we'd like to see the draft to make sure that, you know, that we're not running into.
Yeah, I don't know when the draft is completed, I don't know when it'll be done.
Oh, it's not completed yet?
Well, it's a draft.
Yeah, it's a draft.
I mean, I think that would be appropriate, to send a letter to them saying we have concerns.
But they want to send the draft to the attorney for review. I would.
Well, they've got that done, yes.
Well, we get the letter to them right away, the attorney will have our letter, saying we've got concerns such as, and we may not be able to enunciate all of them at this time, but for instance.
Yeah, I would be interested in knowing if there's any, what the changes are, the extent of the changes, because like you said, there could be non-monetary ones and monetary ones.
And I just couldn't see, I mean, and if that's the case, and they have their own policy, they're the ones that are gonna be affecting those changes. And if this goes through currently with no monetary changes, they could vote down the road to make those changes, and they're not obligated to tell us necessarily, because it doesn't affect the employees on this side of the street, across the street over here. And then we could have things that are drifting completely apart.
Right, that's speculation on our part, which is why I think we need to send a letter saying we need some clarification.
Okay.
What your draft plan is and what it's intended to do and not intended to do.
That was my point I made earlier, that, I was talking to the libraries, you know, maybe they should come to us once in a while, instead of us being there, and just come and present some of these things, as we want to see them and answer all the questions.
Well, we didn't hear anything in their budget presentation regarding the changes in personnel plan, so there may be no monetary changes, but there may be some other types of changes that would differ from the town plan.
And then, if that's the case, perhaps that should be part of the overall personnel plan, so everything's under the same cover.
Yep.
Could be its own chapter in our personnel, in the personnel plan.
Right, in the same blanket.
Yeah, we need to post any changes to our personnel plan 30 days ahead of it taking effect, so.
Sue, have you heard enough to get her a letter?
I got it.
About interested in signature, is that okay with the board?
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. Budget.
Yep, we met this week, had a banner meeting the other night. We had fire and highway, along with the schools, and budget as well. We're moving on down the line. No major discussions as of yet. Peter's waiting to hear everything, and they're taking a lot of notes, and when we go into deliberatives, we'll, I'm sure I'll come back to the board with some stuff and some recommendations.
And the last two departments that you have for the town side will be library and Parks and Rec.
Correct, yeah, and that's December.
Wednesday and December.
Yeah, 2nd or whatever.
Fourth.
Fourth, December.
That's the one I'm attending for.
That's right, yeah, that's the one for me. Yes, thank you, Carlos.
Okay, conservation. First, any questions, America on budget? Okay, conservation?
Actually, if I can do Parks and Rec first, I attended that one first, and.
You did the double whammy that night, didn't you?
Yeah. The winterization of all of the fields is ongoing. Strolling pool and patio finally found leak in their skimmer line at Barnard Pool that was repaired. The filters are being reconditioned. They've also replaced all the galvanized fence poles at Barnard Park, and the fencing was reinstalled and leveled out as best they could. The roofing material for the recreation building repairs has been delivered. Work's gonna begin on the 19th, and it should take about two weeks to complete. The two major things, the director of Parks and Rec will be coming before the board to make recommendations. They went out for bid for the.
Riding lawnmower.
The lawnmower, as well as the outdoor basketball hoop system. And they're gonna be recommending a Skag turf tiger for $11,499 for, from Still's Power Equipment, and Martin Sales for the outdoor basketball hoop systems at $5,830. So the director will be in to review those with you and get the approval of the board. I left that meeting at 7:30, came over here to conservation, and they were just finishing up, but fortunately they stopped and retook pictures, so we were all in the pictures. But I do have their notes. They had a public discussion, map 36 lot 14, it was recommendations to the ZBA. The owner is seeking variances to rebuild a previously collapsed porch, and that property is on Elm Street. And the Conservation Commission discussed it and voted to recommend the variances be requested, be granted as requested. In accordance with the RSAs, they also held their public hearing to expend conservation funds to cover the legal and administrative costs for the conservation easement that we heard last week. And the commission voted unanimously to release $20,791 from the Goffstown land use change tax for the expenses to secure the easement. Patty Gale also updated the commission on the status of the Glen Lake residents. There have been grants applied for, for the milfoil removal, and that, the final approvals haven't been received yet from the state, but the applications have been made. And depending on the schedule, depending on what comes before the board, they may or may not have their December 18 meeting. If there's nothing on the agenda, then that cancel, that meeting would be canceled till January.
All right, thank you. Finally, the historic district.
They did, did meet Friday. They reviewed the unveiling ceremony, also reviewed, compiled a list of who to have thank yous sent to. Also reviewed the historic markers that would be done, and prioritized the list, and authorized the purchase of five markers. So we'll be seeing that coming through, so, because they won't be, they won't be received, so that'll be a PO, that'll, that'll go out, and that'll be part of the accountrances. We'll be seeing.
How many markers?
Five, they prioritized, out of nine, nine of them. I had, mentally had the list.
Say no more.
I could say, I could say a couple of them, and I just, what, what they wanted to do was make sure that they got the ones that they were, had discussions with owners and businesses, rather than ones like the Main Street Bridge, for example, the offensive Main Street Bridge. And I just, the couple that I do remember that were on the list, I'd rather not say, because the ones that I don't say may get me in trouble. And, yeah, that was it, pretty much.
All right, I think that's all committees, right? That's all we had on the agenda. Old business? Older and new business?
If not, a, a part of my report that I wanted to add was that the HDC, their regular meeting falls on Christmas Day. So rather than having that meeting then, they tentatively plan to have a meeting on the eighteenth, if it's necessary, at the call of the chair, just so that you're aware.
While we're talking about the Christmas holidays, is anybody aware of their unavailability during that week? I will not be here the week of Christmas, so Monday...
Typically, we do not meet the week of Christmas.
No, but between Christmas and New Year's.
No, I'm talking Monday before Christmas.
Oh, the Monday before Christmas.
Yes, which is the twenty-third.
Right, that week. The week of Christmas, we typically don't meet. Our last meeting would...
Okay, I thought I heard the week between Christmas.
December sixteenth. Our, our last meeting is usually December sixteenth.
All right.
Now, if we need to meet the week after Christmas, is everyone available?
Yep.
If there are any late-arriving encumbrances or anything, or business, because at year end, you have to take a vote on whether it's carrying over vacation time, or encumbrances, year-end encumbrances. We try to get those all to you on December sixteenth.
So you're talking the thirtieth?
Right.
Sounds like it, yeah. Yeah, I could be available.
If we need.
Yeah, okay.
We'll shoot to get everything to you on the December sixteenth.
Okay, any other older and new business, mayor members? If not, we do need to go into non-public. And then we also need to finish and take a motion on a non-meeting. So, adjourn now.
Uh, no, you can go into non...
No, we have to, then come back, pick up the non-meeting.
Yes. But for GTV purposes, we'll...
We can sign off.
Yes.
So, we're gonna have a non-public session, for those people watching on GTV. We have a non-public session followed by a non-meeting, so we won't be conducting any further business under this agenda. So we'll sign off with you first.
I have just one question, are we gonna be voting on anything?
Yes, when you come out of non-public, you may be voting on something.
All right, so, we'll sign off. Have a good evening.
It will be part of the meeting, thank you.
A good holiday, everybody.